Okay. Good evening, I will call to order a regular session of the school committee meeting on September 20th at seven o'clock. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I think we need to roll call. Is that correct?
We can roll call, yep.
So we have Ms. Picard is remote.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McDevitt.
Here.
Here.
And I'm here. Dr. Gilligan, if you want to include yours.
Yeah, so we have our student reps, Ben and Nora. Dr. Mealy, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. And virtually, we have Assistant Superintendent Lorraine Marks and Executive Director of Special Education, Marcy Bucuzzi.
Great. And I do not see public in the room, and I don't think there was anybody who wanted to call in, is that correct, Ms. Picard?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So we will move on to consent items, approval of minutes for September 8th.
So I'll move that we approve the minutes as presented in the packet for September 8th, 2022.
I second.
Okay. Discussion, ready to vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bietzke?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. And we are ready for our student reps' report.
All right, so if you didn't know me, my name's Ben, I'm a junior at North Andover. So we're in our fourth week of school. See, the sports are definitely in mid-season, classes are starting to pick up. We have a SEAL bilinguacy test on October 3rd. There's another test later in March, the SEAL bilinguacy test is an opportunity for bilingual students to get a state seal. That kind of shows their ability to speak, their ability to speak two languages. We have AP exam registration open yesterday for May exams. There's the homecoming football game following the homecoming dance on October 29th. We have a boys' and girls' soccer game today, boys' golf tomorrow, cross-country tomorrow as well. And football, or Friday has a football game, home against Marblehead. And girls' volleyball is also tomorrow. There's a club fair at the end of September, or early October. And we'll have at least thirty clubs that the high school has to offer presenting there.
Hi, everyone, good to be here again. I'm Nora Elkhadiji, I'm a senior. And as Ben said, school's definitely picked up since the last time we met. Probably the most obvious change is all the new clubs in light of the club fair coming up on the 29th. Just a few I saw in the hallway off the top of my head are the Queer Book Club, the Science Team, Model UN, and After School Help, and finally, a Spanish Heritage Club. Secondly, for the past week or so, we've hosted a few Spanish exchange students. And personally, I'm friends with a few of them, and they all tell me very good things about the high school. They're very impressed with our selection of classes, the engagement in each of them, so I've heard very good things from all of them. Third, the freshman class elections are coming up, I think the beginning of next month, so they're preparing for that. I know this affects me personally as a senior. In-person college visits are going smoothly, and guidance is starting to host like lunch chat sessions where they give one-on-one advice about the Common App procedure and things like that. And lastly, Spirit Week is coming up mid-October. And I'm very impressed with what Student Council has brainstormed so far. Again, just a few things, they have things like dress-up days, themes like Wild West and year 2000. They have lunch events planned, like a Just Dance competition, Carnival of the Games, a dance competition, pieing teachers, things like that. So I'm very excited to see where this takes the engagement of the overall classes and money they raise and things like that.
Great, thank you. Do we have questions from the committee? Ms. Picard?
Thank you very much for your report. I am also particularly excited about Spanish Heritage Club. Having been a Spanish teacher, I really want to appreciate that you guys are using the microphone and speaking directly into it. It really helps me and the others who might be watching to hear you. And I wonder if the Wild West Day might be an opportunity to have a conversation about cultural appropriation as well. Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
No comments.
Yep, great job, appreciate you guys, of course, being here. I think we'd said, you know, you're welcome to come in person and remote in as well, whatever you're most comfortable with. So thank you for, of course, being here. Couple of quick questions, and you may or may not know the answers. But I know as seniors, one of the great things that the high school offers is SAT classes, or the SAT exam in school. Do you know if they're doing that again this year?
I don't know if they're hosting the test in the school, but I do know people who've taken their prep class, and they said it's been very helpful, especially for like one-on-one, like peer work.
Okay, awesome. I know that in the past, they, I don't remember what day it might be, like a Wednesday or Thursday, but students have had the opportunity so that they don't have to go anywhere else, or leave, or come back on a Saturday to do that. And so that's been great. The club fair is, sounds awesome, you know, always thrilled to kind of see kids get involved. And I'm a firm believer in, you know, there's so much that you learn in the actual classrooms, but there's so much that you learn from other kids and just doing things, whether it's organizing events, or, you know, functions, you know, things of that nature, so I think that that's great. I love to see the emails coming out regarding all the guidance and the college visits that are coming up next year. And I think I saw something, I feel like it's in the middle of October, but there's a parental forum as well. So for parents who are going through the process, who are maybe not familiar, you know, might be the first child going through, that that's coming up. I don't know, Dr. Gilligan, if you remember seeing that email or not, I just don't remember the date, and I didn't write it down.
I saw the email too, and I didn't write the date down either.
I feel like it's mid-October, but I could be wrong. And I think that that's a great opportunity, and having gone through a senior last year, I wish I had attended more of those because there's some great information that are, that's out there. So that's it, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Bietzke?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I love the idea of the club fair, is that during the school day?
It's during all three lunches.
Oh, awesome, okay, thanks.
I'm really excited to hear about the SEAL of Bilinguality Test being offered early on in the school year. It's a really great opportunity for students who are bilingual and literate in more than one language to have that distinguished seal on their diploma. And I'd love to know, like, if we, can we get like a number of any of our students who have? Because I think the test results are fairly quick turnaround. It'd just be great to know what are, how many of our students actually are fully truly bilingual, it's wonderful.
We certainly can, I mean, it was pretty awesome to put this in a few years back. Ms. Marks, Ms. Ando did an amazing job, and we can certainly get the numbers. Ms. Marks might even know off the top of her head, but I'm not going to put you on the spot, Ms. Marks.
No, no, no one's on the spot, I just think that we really need to celebrate these students, it's such a wonderful thing to have on your, I mean, we really do, we need to celebrate this.
Absolutely, so, we'll get that.
I can get some numbers for you, how many students took the test in the past couple of years, and how many are doing it this fall?
Thank you, that'd be great.
I could be wrong, but I feel like if they pass, they all, do they wear a different cord? I don't, I don't remember.
But I think there's a special seal.
There's a seal on the diploma.
There's a seal on the diploma, I feel like there's a cord that they wear.
We can certainly check on that.
Okay.
I think you are right about the color cord, Mr. McDevitt. Ms. Marks, I wonder, do you recall if most of those who get the SEAL of Bilinguality are bilingual at home? Or are they bilingual from their academic engagement only?
It's really a mix.
Thank you.
I can get the breakdown on that too, though.
That'd be good to have. Thank you both for coming in, it's great that you can come in person, we appreciate it, it was a great report from both of you. You are welcome to stay, and you are welcome to leave if you are, go have homework to do, or just somewhere else to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Nice job, thanks, Ben and Nora.
Okay, Mr., Dr. Gilligan, I think we're on to you.
All right, at the last meeting, we talked about the opening of school. It just, again, I can't emphasize, it just felt really different than the past couple of years. It felt more normal, we were thrilled, really thrilled to open up. In the superintendent's report this week, I really wanted to just highlight some pretty awesome things going on in the district, some pretty amazing groups. First and foremost, I know that the Wear Yellow Day saved the dates for November. But you guys know Courtney Pham, the head of the CPAC here in North Andover. I got this about a week and a half ago. We're all just so excited to promote this day, they do an amazing job. And the CPAC stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And Marcy wanted to speak just for a minute or two. But this Wear Yellow Day is for that awareness, and it is November 18th, so it's a little early, but we're getting on it, Marcy?
Thanks, let's just, CPAC awareness, just like on cue. That Wear Yellow, the Light It Up Yellow, they did the bridge last year, so that's kind of something that's going to happen again. But Jim has two flyers that I just asked him to present that are two new opportunities. Sorry, hold on one second. So as we talked about inclusion opportunities last week, over the last couple of weeks, we had two really nice opportunities come. And we talked about Rick Galant and his partnerships, and I said earlier today, you asked Rick Galant, and the answer is yes. So this was, this inclusion sports, inclusion sports, sorry. This opportunity that I saw locally, and Rick ended up partnering with, and through community programs, offering, sorry, we're offering, it's a really nice opportunity, sorry, one second.
If you'd like, I could mention something while Marcy is taking care of that.
Go ahead, Lorraine.
Ms. Marks, please go ahead.
Sorry, this is the thing, they're so embarrassing.
This is not on the list, but I did meet with some women from the enrichment council. And you know that with COVID, it was a challenge, and they were able to still bring in some programs for our schools. But with COVID, a lot of things have changed in terms of people's participation, people's lives, their schedules, all of that. And they are really looking for people to be part of the council again. They do fabulous work, I know as a principal, really appreciated the programs they brought in. And then in my role as Humanities Director, I was part of that, their regular meetings and helping them determine what is appropriate based on standards, for, for example, for science, our ELA at the middle school to bring in. So we are looking for volunteers, especially to represent Franklin, Kittredge, Sargent, and Atkinson Schools. So I'm going to ask the principals to reach out to their communities as well, but I wanted to just mention that tonight as well, to see if we could get some volunteers. I was taking up some time for you there, Marcy.
I'll talk fast. So over the summer, this inclusion sports came to my attention locally in a community, I live in Beverly, they were offering some, partnering with some local rec programs, Danvers Reading, a couple of others. And so they had an open house in August that we got some information, that I got some information about, and passed it on to Rick. And so, as you guys know, and I've talked about before, we partner with community programs to support community programs and the youth center by offering our staff to support all types of needs of students. But inclusion sports, and there's another one from Merrimack College, are specifically geared towards students with significant disabilities. So they're offering two separate groups, it's geared towards their groups, you know, they're offering it through the community programs, it's two separate groups, capturing even our preschool ages, which is pretty amazing, because they have very few offerings. So I, it's going, Courtney Pham's going to put it out, Rick put it out, I sent it out. I had the teachers of those specific programs for those students send it to those families, so we could really target the students that are really, you know, who it's really geared towards. So this is something new, and something that we can hopefully expand. The other opportunity, and I received a flyer just yesterday, I believe, or maybe the day before, and I sent out with this. It just so happened to be, was Merrimack College is offering a Special Olympics kind of sports and rec program on different dates, on Sundays over the summer. Again, geared towards our six, grades age of six through 12. So all different types of activities. This is again geared towards more of a, students with more significant disabilities. So it's really nice to see, and one of the things I've been talking to Rick about, so if anybody knows anybody in the communities, again, Rick's, both Ricks are always, oop, sorry, just hit my thing, always willing to partner with us. Our staff is awesome and supporting, but any type of adaptive, whether it's dance, or art, or any type of adaptive courses that people are maybe interested in teaching, Rick is always, through community programs, is always looking for people to partner with. So just if people listening, put that out in the community, it can be a wide variety of things. Last year, we were lucky enough to work with a woman who did a cooking club at the high school. So we're really looking to target all ages for some after-school programming. And just another, unified basketball started this week, they're practicing in Andover High School. If people haven't had the opportunity to stop by one of those games, I was late to the game at that, to seeing those, but I would make as many as possible, because it's like a joy that you can't find anywhere else to go see that. And their new coach, Ryan, new official coach, Ryan Burr, so I just wanted to talk about those few things. Courtney's going to be setting those up, and she's going to come to a meeting closer to October to talk more about Light It Up Yellow.
Awesome. Thanks, Marcy.
Yep.
Some other key things in the superintendent's report, really wanted to thank the North Andover Historical Society, they're hosting an educator open house in their newly renovated building, and sharing, you know, all the different.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what's being said.
Okay. Is that better, Helen?
It's a little bit better.
All right, checking the booth.
I don't know if it can increase enough.
All right, how's that, Helen?
Helen, can you hear him?
Helen?
Helen?
I'm going to turn on closed caption.
How's that?
Can you hear us, Helen, now?
Marcy and Lorraine, can you hear her?
I've got closed caption on, so I can hear through the closed captions.
Okay.
That is to say I can read. It was a little difficult. I should thank a teacher.
That is if closed caption can get my accent right. All right. You know, wanted to talk about the, you know, the part, some really awesome opportunities for our staff, partnering with the North Andover Historical Society, they're having an educator open house, you know, with their newly renovated building, sharing information in terms of giving a tour of the exhibit galleries, the research library, meeting rooms, you know, the Warden Theater. You know, it's certainly a facility and something that we could do more at. And we're excited to, that they're having this open house, we've done some work in the past, and it's great to have this relationship going again, because it's truly, if you haven't been to the Warden Theater, really a special place that they've done. So they have an educator open house on October 20th, from 2:30 to 4:00, and we're excited for our staff to participate in that. Next up is NAPRIN, and NAPRIN stands for the North Andover Parent Resource Network. They put on throughout the course of the year, a variety of timely and informational, helpful topics for parents and families and guardians. And so the next one coming up is the 22nd, it's Thursday, and it's Understanding School Anxiety and Refusal. And so that is something really exciting, that Lisa Roberts has done a great job promoting the different topics helpful to families. You know, some folks sometimes say it's a smaller group, you know, they have limited numbers. And, you know, we've, in the past, run events for what was called the Speaker Series, or we've had events in person, and we haven't had the biggest turnouts. And so these turnouts have been really good and helpful for the folks that attend. So this is ongoing throughout the course of the year, so really a shout-out to the North Andover Parent Resource Network. Next up, I just wanted to highlight, I know you, I know parents, guardians, caretakers get a lot of emails from schools. And I want to highlight, once a month, we send out the superintendent's newsletter. Cindy Parent does a pretty remarkable job with it, it's chock-full of information. It's always posted on the front webpage of our website, but you'll have an update from the super, from myself. You'll have upcoming events, updates around different activities and music. And then they'll have highlights from different schools with a focus, we'll have a tweet of the month. Just a lot of great information, and it's just a reminder of folks that it is, comes out monthly, usually by the, it's on the 15th of the month. And Cindy, again, does a remarkable job. And there's usually terrific information in there, including information around, you know, parents making the difference, all sorts of things. So if you get a chance, please check that out. And last but not least, substitute teacher employment opportunities. I, you know, we could always use more substitute teachers. So if anyone's out there and interested in substitute teaching, we will train you, we'll do the work with you to get you prepared and in classrooms. And you can go to the, our website, northandoverpublicschools.com, and there's, in Human Resources, there's a big button that says Substitute Teaching. And you can apply, it's separate for each school, depending on what school you want to work at or grade level. But we could always use more substitute teachers, and that is a hundred dollars a day, you know, for that. And Ms. Marks already talked about the enrichment council, and that's it. I wanted to just highlight those things really happening, and I thought it was nice to be able to put the links in, and just, you know, just another piece for parents to resource for them, so, and for our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have questions, or? Ms. Picard, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you so much.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the chair's report, and I guess we have to have a discussion about the meeting for October 6th. I have a conflict, and I had proposed a tentative change, but I think that might have some, we might have some concerns about the 4th.
It conflicts with Yankapoor.
Yankapoor. Okay. So.
Sarah, that would eliminate the 4th and the 5th. Because of sundown to sundown, if I'm saying that correctly. Possibility for the 3rd, which would be the Monday?
That could work for me, is there a select board meeting?
There's a first, it's the first CPAC meeting, I mean, I can talk to her, to Courtney too.
I have a conflict that night, too.
Okay. Okay, so. I mean, I guess the other option is I could not attend, Holly would have to run the meeting. Sorry, Holly.
What if we did the 13th? It's a long time between meetings, but.
That works better for me.
And then I think our next one is, if I'm correct, the 20th, we'd have two back-to-back.
Yep.
The only thing that would worry me on that is, I don't think we have any.
Is there anything that we need to approve, that we think the extra week is going to mess up?
Right.
Yeah, there's nothing in new business tonight that would be.
Pushing off a week on goals, it's no big deal.
Right.
Is there anything with MSBA?
I think nothing that's time-sensitive for an approval.
Is there anything with MSBA that would be coming up for, before the 13th? I think the 17th is the next date.
The item we have tonight is the September 30th deadline, and then the next deadline is October 30th.
Okay.
How do we feel about, Helen, what do you think about the 13th?
I haven't looked at what else might be going on in our schools, but I, my personal calendar is open on the 13th.
Okay.
I'll take a quick look at the public schools and the all-towns calendar right now.
Okay.
Work-wise and personally, I know I'm okay.
Does that work for you, Jill?
I'm good with the 13th.
Okay, and Holly, you said that's better, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, and that works for me, too.
Looking at the all-towns calendar, that's Geography Night at 5:30 at the middle school. Community Preservation Committee and Virtual Forgotten Nations Native Tribes of New England. So if, if it's not a conflict for Geography Night for folks, and I think Geography Night ends at 7:00, if that's correct, Ms. Marks?
I am not sure, I know it starts at 5:30, because I have it in my calendar too, but I don't.
It does say 7:00 on the, on the town calendar, so, I mean, it could be that people would make a dash for it. If somebody had to make a public comment, we have public comment at the end of the meeting as well, so I imagine that would probably be okay. It's not far to make a dash from the AMSOB to Central Office.
I think over the years, I've dashed from Geography Night to School Committee.
I think I have.
I think I probably will be.
Okay, and I just double-checked, because I always forget if Yankapoor or Rosh Ashana.
Rosh Ashana is coming week.
It comes first, okay. I know that they're about a week apart, might be 10 days.
Right.
But yeah, we're fine there, too.
Okay, so do we want to say the 13th, then? Do we need to vote on that? No, it's just dates, right, okay, all right. And then we're just going to go through and remind you that the Educative Hall of Fame and Professional Teacher Status is, I think, is it the 26th?
October 26th.
Okay.
At 6:30 PM.
6:30.
And Human Resources Director Greg Landry is in the process of, location to be determined.
Okay.
Is the Warden Theater open?
I think that's what we're checking on, so, we've had it in different places, you know, I think mostly the library and the rotunda, but it's gotten big over the.
I was just going to say it's gotten so big that it can be tight, okay, cool.
And then I, we did not get this on the agenda for this week, but there was a donation to the middle school for a kiln, and that's on me, I apologize, but I would like to add it to our agenda for our next meeting, and maybe ask if we can suspend the rules to approve it. I don't have the paperwork here, but if we can look at it next weekend, or at our next meeting and approve it. If we have any questions, we can discuss them, is that okay? All set, Helen?
No problem, does that prevent us, or delay us from getting the kiln, or do we already have the kiln?
I don't think we have it, but we would have had a first reading tonight ahead, I put it on the agenda. But if we can put it on for next meeting, we, if we can suspend the rules and vote then, then it shouldn't be a delay.
Okay, and if you can get us the information in advance, that's helpful, too.
I will, yeah, for sure. Okay. All right, moving on to old business, we have our second reading of the overnight student trips.
So I will move.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the overnight trips as printed in the packet.
I'll second that.
Great, is there discussion? Questions?
Yep, so the only thing I would say, and Ms. Marks gave this to me, I had a question about the refund policy for the Spanish trip. She responded regarding what the refund policy is, but if this is going to be a historical document, I'd like to just have it added to this, so it's referenceable. If we can just, if we can just update the document, I think I'm fine with that.
All right.
And then with the trip to France, I don't think we've been back to France in like four years, five years. Because I feel, obviously not the COVID year, I feel like the year before, there may have been an incident. And I'm just wondering if we're thinking that this might be an annual trip, because I know Germany seems to be every other year, correct? Your daughter went.
She didn't.
Oh, she didn't, I thought she.
We had a cancellation.
Okay, all right, I thought you went.
She was signed up.
Okay.
Ms. Marks, if you feel free to speak, but this has been a long-time trip, and we've gone for many, many years. But we definitely, with COVID.
But we definitely, with COVID.
Yeah.
Missed a year. And I think one year there was the French trip, not an incident on the trip. I think there was, you know, there was something happening in the region.
Right.
And we made a decision, I believe, to go to Montreal or Quebec.
There was one year when we were approving French checks here, there and everywhere, and they kept kind of falling apart. They didn't have enough students and it was kind of a challenge.
Yeah, okay. And I think that was as a result of something that happened in Europe. And, and we, for out of safety, did not go forward with that.
Okay.
All right, that's all I had.
Yeah, I mean, we do follow the State Department, any warnings from the State Department, so.
Other questions, thoughts, comments? Okay, are we ready for a vote? Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
All wears. All right.
Sorry, just taking notes. Second reading of our initial compliance certification. Helen, did you have a question?
I did not. I don't know what that feedback was.
Okay.
So initial compliance certification, I'll turn that over to Dr. Mealy. I think we'll be able to get some signatures tonight.
So this is the standard language that MSBA uses for this. So it's been vetted by a lot of communities, but it's also been vetted by our Select Board, Town Manager and Council, and there were no concerns raised. They did have the Select Board Chair sign the document. So as long as the school committee is okay with that, then the Chair of the School Committee and, and Dr. Gilligan will sign, and I will send it off to our coordinator.
Great. We don't need to vote on that, do we? We do need to vote on that, sorry.
Yes.
I move we accept the initial compliance certification as presented in the packet.
I'll second that.
Is there discussion?
I'm super excited. Like this feels like the first real, real step that we're taking. Like to get the things done. Like it's legit going to happen now, so I'm excited.
It's a good comment. I like it. I like it. Any other excited comments or questions?
That's thrilling.
Okay. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. All right, moving on to new business. We have first reading and discussion of the Superintendent and School Committee Goals.
Okay. Holly, do you have a copy in there linked to the agenda? So first and foremost, I'd like to thank the Chair and the Vice Chair for connecting on the goals. Every year it's helpful. I think North Andover is pretty unique and special in the sense of having goals for the Superintendent, but also shared goals. And the School Committee sets a goal. You know, it used to be completely separate. We've done this for quite some time. So the first goal is collaborate with, I mean, this is a shared goal between the School Committee and the Superintendent with Dr. Mealy. Collaborate with municipal officials and engage in residents to ensure appropriate and adequate educational facilities and funding in the future to decrease class sizes and to better meet the needs of all students. You'll see that most of the key actions and benchmarks are really set with the deliverables around the MSBA, the Kittredge School. And also as we continue to work forward with the other projects as well, such as the middle school renovation in addition. So we have key actions and benchmarks for that. This is a super exciting time for North Andover and for the years to come. This will really make a big difference. For the Superintendent Goals, through ongoing discussion with the district and school-based teams, we'll continue to identify and address learning needs resulting from the pandemic. We'll transition from our, transition our planning and focus to long-term curriculum and resource plan to address student needs. You know, and the key actions there will be, you know, prepare and present the upcoming budget plan that funds the recovery positions that will transition into the long-term plan. Use evidence-based curriculum resources to support instruction. Continue with assessment tools to support the identification of learning needs. Provide professional development and coaching, including our work with Boston College on the use of data and targeting instruction. And provide coaching and PD around universal design for learning new literacy resources and math assessment practices. Several benchmarks are listed as presenting the budget, Superintendent's recommended budget, providing the curriculum resources, for example, wit and wisdom to support literacy instruction. Scheduling the data meetings with the School Committee, meeting monthly with the Principals, Curriculum Team, the BC Data Consultant to look at the data. Providing professional development that includes additional work with BC, consultant looking at the data and achievement gaps, wit and wisdom, PD, math assessments, MAP, social emotional topics. And partnering would seem collaborative for universal design for learning, coaching and professional development. The next goal is a really important one. It's been one we've been working particularly a lot on for the past couple of years. Is for the 2022, 23 school year, the district will support a district-wide commitment to social justice and equity for all students. The district will continue working to create a culture that reflects, respects and embraces the voices, perspectives and differences arising from our diverse community. Key actions to provide ongoing coaching support to guide this work. Continue with our District Racial and Ethnic Diversity Committee. Continue to promote student voice through student-led clubs. We're looking to review equity audit options, you know, and we have those fellows out there looking to get that done and provide professional, continue to provide professional development for administrators and staff. And then our benchmarks are, you know, schedule monthly meetings. We will be meeting with the District Racial and Ethnic Diversity Committee, promoting ongoing club activities. I think that you heard from the student reps tonight. I got an email. I, I didn't print it out, but I think it's, there were over 30 clubs today. And I list a few examples here. It's really exciting that these student-led clubs are really taking off. Posting the PD calendar, including the work we're doing around facing history and ourselves, and partnering with an equity audit agency by the spring. That's a big undertaking. I think that that's a really important one. You know what it does for the communities? It provides an assessment of what our gaps may be. And, but it also provides an outside lens of, you know, what are we? We might be doing some things really, really well, and there are other areas that we can improve. And it's a big undertaking, but I think that this would be really the next step and excellent for our community as we move forward. And then the School Committee Goal is communicate and engage with the community to advocate for the district, for the district with residents and town leadership. And there's several key actions and benchmarks for that in terms of, you know, meeting, you know, communicating and meeting and sharing accurate and consistent information. And benchmarks around, something we try to do is provide various times and locations for school committee meetings, participate in public forums to support Facilities Master Plan 2, monthly article by the Chair, for example, in the newsletter that was in the Superintendent's Report. And I don't know if Holly or Pam want to jump in. You know, it is the School Committee Goal, but you know, we're all in this together. And I think that one of the nice things about North Andover is having these laser focus on these goals. Doesn't mean that we're letting anything else go by too. You know, we'll continue to do all our work in those other areas. But this keeps us really focused and moving forward for our students. I don't know if you guys want to add anything about the School Committee Goal, but I think it looks appropriate and good.
Discussion? Thoughts? Questions? Do we want to go around the room? Ms. Picard? Sorry.
Yep, thank you very much. I have a couple of clarifications. One, at the very top, Dr. Gilligan, it says shared goals with School Committee and Superintendent with Dr. Mealy. Does Dr. Mealy only relate to number one? And if we're including Dr. Mealy, might we want to include Ms. Marks and Ms. Bucuzzi for Goals 2 and 3?
Tusha, excellent point. You know, I, I think historically that we've, you know, we've always kind of done it that way when we've done different projects over the years.
I don't know why it's there.
I don't, I don't.
The first one says shared goals, but then above number two, it does say Superintendent Goals.
Yeah, we're just talking about the one with the shared goals.
Right.
We're, I don't know why, Dr. Mealy, we'll put you in.
It might have just been because I was contributing a lot to number one.
Yep, right.
But it doesn't obviously need to be there for.
We put you in as a benchmark.
And we have plenty of time to make that change now that we're going to the 13th.
Ms. Picard, I made the same note. So I would actually say, you know, if we're going to keep that in there, you know, that we absolutely should include Ms. Bucuzzi and Ms. Marks as well.
Because I'm looking at the electronic version, I can see it's already been.
It's already gone, yep. You know, but I do think, you know, the first one is so specific to the building, and that is very much a partnership with Dr. Mealy as well. So maybe that got moved there inadvertently.
Probably.
No, I, it's a tremendous team. And we've spoken to Dr. Gilligan's ability to build a team and keep a team going and to all the contributions of the team members. So I, I truly appreciate, you know, everybody who's working towards that, that same goal. But that was one of my questions. And then I just want to bring up with the Committee on Goal 4. There seemed to have been confusion last spring when we were doing Dr. Gilligan's evaluation about whose goal was Goal 4. So if this is the School Committee Goal to increase communication and engagement with the community, I think that's great. I think if there's a communication or engagement goal that we want to make for Dr. Gilligan, that we need to separate that out and make it clear that that's his goal so that we don't have that confusion that we had last year. And I don't feel that we need to have an additional communication and engagement goal for Dr. Gilligan. That was part of his incoming goals that we did as required by the state for new superintendents. So I'm fine with the goals with number four being for the School Committee. But I just want to make sure that we all understand that now and that we understand that later. Or if I'm misunderstanding it, that I, that I'm corrected now so that I'm not confused later.
I think it's the School Committee Goal.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So I actually have, one of my points that I was going to talk about, kind of relates to that, where Mr. Hicks pointed out, we have one goal, shared goal, and then it goes to Superintendent Goals. I would probably suggest getting rid of the numbers altogether. Because we have shared goals, but we only have one underneath it anyway. So that is, is misleading. So maybe if we separate out, Ms. Picard, and this is why I'm getting to your point, if we separate out the School Committee Goals, so it's, we're not assessing Dr. Gilligan on it at the end of the year, only on his goals? Does that help?
It seems silly to me to have our goal on his goal sheet.
Yeah.
I think the purpose was, you know, this has been a tradition we've had for a while. School Committee used to have their own set of goals.
Right.
And we'd get to the, you know, the end of the year sometimes and, you know, there'd be a list of goals and there, everything we do is really a team. So I think we could get rid of the numbers. It could be a shared goal, singular. And then I don't think there's anything wrong with having the School Committee Goal, but it's totally up to you because it is the School Committee Goal.
Can you clarify what you're saying? I'm sorry.
So if this document is all together, does that mean this is the document that we are assessing Dr. Gilligan on at the end of the year? And if it is, I also agree with Ms. Picard and Mr. Hicks, remove the School Committee Goal.
Okay, that's what I thought you meant.
But if it has to stay in there, separate it out from the document somehow so it makes it clear that we're not being, we're not assessing him on our goal.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So that could be done parenthetically by after the underlined title, School Committee Goal, parentheses, not for evaluation for Dr. Gilligan, something like that.
Yeah, it's for your own evaluation. You could ask Dr. Mealy and I, Ms. Marks and Ms. Bucuzzi if we want to evaluate. No.
We can evaluate it every three years.
It's a good goal, the School Committee, like I said, set goals, and I think this is a really good one. And I think we could just make it clear so there is no confusion. We've successfully done it in the past. I think just at the end of the year last year. It was quite a year, as you know. So, good point.
I, I think there, I mean, I agree with you. I think that there are some components of this that rely on Dr. Gilligan and the team as well in terms of varying, you know, where the meetings are, communication, you know, the information. Like, we don't necessarily pull the information, you know, for the devil's test, right? I mean, like we rely on, you know, Dr. Gilligan's team, you know, to kind of do that and that analytics and then make sure that it's out there. So it's our goal that we see that so that we can act on it and budget on it. But it's, it's dependent on them as well. So I, I don't think we necessarily evaluate him on whether or not we have a meeting at Sargent or not. But, I mean, if he were to say, I refuse to go to Sargent and have a School Committee meeting there, I mean, then that might be a communication point that we would have out there. But I, I think kind of, we're working together.
But that would be, there are standards in the rubric that the other part of his evaluation that would account for any of the communication things that he is required to do. And these are the things, in addition to that, already standing rubric that we evaluate on.
Specific for us.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Picard, did you have, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just.
So just to be clear, that, that goal, I'm not evaluating on Goal 4.
Yes.
That's the School Committee Goal, just to be clear. And a very good point, Ms. Hicks. Thank you.
Ms. Picard, did you have other questions?
Well, just finally with that, with that Goal 4 with School Committee. We did have, and I have suggested and recommended in the past that we have informal meetings with two School Committee meetings in the public. We called them coffee chats. We did them online during the pandemic. Some districts do it as office hours, and they do it in the public library or in Central Office where community members can come in and speak to School Committee members, not in front of a camera, not being recorded, not, not being official, but being a communication that's a little bit less formal. And I think that that would be a great thing, and I'd be more than happy to help facilitate some of those if this committee chose to do so.
So Helen, we did talk about that. And I think the problem was last year, we didn't do them. So if we had that as a goal, we failed. And now our committee, everybody works full-time during the day, I think, which makes it really difficult to do anything during the day.
So we could certainly do something in the evenings or the afternoons.
The other thing though, is that we can still do those things and not have them listed as a key action or a benchmark on our goal with, I mean, it just, it doesn't have to be written here to do that. And I think with everybody's time constraints and the realistic thoughts of how it went down last year, I know last year was kind of a quirky year. I mean, we can, we could definitely do them, but we don't have to.
My experience is if we, if we wrote it down and didn't do it, if we don't write it down, I don't think that increases our likelihood of doing it.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Okay. Mr. Hicks, thoughts, questions?
For me, the, the first goal seems very straightforward and appropriate in that those are the things we have to do to make sure that the projects stay on track. So I like how very specific and well outlined it is. Thank you for that. And as, as concrete as that is, like how specific that is, I also like the, some of the flexibility of, that we have in, or you have in 2 and 3 to make sure that we're responding to our kids' needs and using the appropriate resources at your disposal and methods to, to make changes as necessary. I'm excited to see and hear about and think about more evidence-based curriculum. And I'm really excited for an equity audit because I think it'll just, it looks at all the things, even the things we don't think to look at. It's very thorough and it'll highlight what we're doing great at and opportunities for us to continue to improve. So thank you for including that here. Really do appreciate it.
All set? Ms. McDevitt?
Two quick things. One, I noticed in Goals 2 and 3, using consultants from Boston College. Right, I assume in 2, the BC Data Consultant is from BC as well. So the only question that I would have is, you know, what other universities have we looked at? I think there's always kind of a difference of perspective from different universities. And so I wouldn't want to necessarily have only one be doing that. So I don't, I don't know from a financial impact if, you know, it's all inclusive or not. But I do think some variety and alternate, alternate views may be of value to us. Just to kind of echo a little bit of, of what Mr. Hicks said, you know, the equity audit, you know, definitely great. I don't remember, and I apologize for that, but the last time we did an audit of special education was when?
I believe it was 2014.
Before, we did, there was a couple of program evaluations the year before.
Before, we did, there was a couple of program evaluations the year before I started, so four years ago.
Okay, so I.
And it wasn't full, but it was a few.
Yep. I, I would recommend that we do an evaluation of that if we're talking at least four years pre-pandemic.
But I think an equity audit would encompass all of that, right? Like multilingual learners, special education, curriculum, all facets of.
That would be something we'd be looking at, all types of learners. Also, and I think we'll have to check, Marcy, I think if, if this is the start of your fourth year.
Yep. So I know specific, I, there was, we looked into doing an SEL one more recently, and so I know that, that wasn't done, but there was a, I want to say it was through Melmark, one of the, our RISE programs or our autism programs was done, I believe, the year before I came here. So it was at least five years ago. Or around five years ago.
Yeah. And we'd have to check. I think, you know, with the state, I can't think of the name off the top of my head. When they came in and did a review of civil rights, you know, it's ongoing every few years. But we can certainly check.
The tiered focus monitoring.
Tiered focus monitoring. Thank you.
Always on the top of my head.
Yes.
We did the Walker Report, I want to say back in like 2014.
Yeah, that was before. Yeah.
That was comprehensive.
Yep. So if you're talking about something like that, it's, it's been pretty, it's been a while.
Oh, yeah. I'm not even sure it was 2014. I feel like it was before that.
It could have been, actually.
Because I feel like it was done and we were just getting the results.
I just remember because I was chair of CPAC then, and so I was chair right around that year, that timeframe, 2012 to 2014.
Okay. It's been a long time, long time. So, I mean, if we are doing an equity audit, I mean, I would like to just know kind of who's doing that and what attention they're going to have on some of our special education programs and opportunities.
Holly, I don't think that you and I were elected until 2017.
I was chair of CPAC, Helen.
Oh, CPAC. Thank you. I just thought.
Yeah, you were chair my first year, five years ago, my fourth, my fifth year now. All right. Thank you, Mr. McDevitt.
Very quickly, yep. So I had a similar question about Boston College. Underneath goal three, key action, provide ongoing coaching support to guide this work through Boston College. Is a little unclear to me. Does it mean Boston College is guiding us through this work or are we guiding Boston College through this work?
So where, they've helped us with professional development. I can have Lorraine talk about it for a second if you want, Lorraine.
Yep.
You know, Boston College, we've, in the past, we've partnered with other people, but they, like locally, I know the same, they partner with Lawrence, they partner with different districts. Go ahead, Ms. Marks.
Yeah. So the, the agreement with Boston College was a two-year contract. We're really doing a lot of data work with our principals. We've brought in some of our facilitators for collaborative inquiry at the elementary level. We've brought in some of our coaches, all of our coaches belong. But at the middle school level, also brought in our two, our literacy and our math coach and Chet and I met to talk about expanding the supports from the high school, you know, beyond the principal. So we're looking at, looking at data, looking at how we collect the data. We're looking at achievement gaps. So that there's a lot of work there. And then the, the ongoing consulting also refers to the work that Kristin Ando and I do with the principals. So the past couple of years, we've been meeting with them once a month around equity and inclusion and diversity. And we use a consultant around that work as well to help us prepare our, our presentations and our conversations. So that's what that is.
Thank you. So I guess I would just suggest moving the words around to say using Boston College to provide ongoing coaching support or something like that. So it looks, the way it reads, it could be, we are providing it to the college. And then on the same goal, review equity audit options, but then under benchmarks, partner with an equity audit agency by spring of 2023. I assume the reviewing of the options is the result of the report by the agency?
No, it'd be examining, this is, it would be a big undertaking. So it would be examining, you know, who, who can do this type of work? What type of proposal would we have to put out there? How much would it cost, you know, around those things and what we look at to bring in?
Oh, so the review of the audit options is review of the audit agencies?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Part of the selection.
Okay.
Right.
I thought it was the results, reviewing the results of the audit.
That's the way I looked at it too, until you asked the question, but it's, it's the selection, right? Okay.
So you might make that more clear then.
Thank you.
That's all. Okay. You know, when you go last, everybody already has all your thoughts. I do have like a weird question about wording on number one where it says funding to future, funding in the future to decrease class size and to better meet the needs of our students. I, I know it's weird, but can we switch the word better? Because that implies that we're not. Or get rid of it or, yeah, that's what I was, like, to always or consistently or just get rid of it altogether. I know, sorry, stupid quirky little thing, but it popped out. And I would, I'm not sure how the process works for the equity audit, but would love for us to be involved in the discussion and the process and how all of that goes down. I think there's a lot of interest here and I think we can all learn a lot from it. I know reflection in education is a huge part of practice, and this is just a really intense and equitable way to have that reflection on our own district. So I'd love if we can all be involved somehow in the process as we go through step by step, because I think it's new for most of us. I know it's new for me.
And it's a major goal.
And it's a major goal. Yeah. So.
Yeah. And I just want to be realistic about the timeline, you know. This is a big undertaking, but we think it's important. It's something we've been working on, and every year we continue to make progress, and this would be very helpful to the district and our community.
Yeah.
I imagine it would take time to find appropriate agencies, put together proposals, review those, and choose one.
Right.
Before it even actually starts.
Right.
Like it's a, it's a, it's a huge time commitment.
Yep. And we also, you know, we're also want to, we'll continue to want to work with the town too, and, you know, the work going on and collaboration and, you know, maybe opportunities there as well, so.
So is it perhaps more reasonable to say that this year we're looking for an agency that will perform the equity audit in the next year? Or is that too much time?
I mean, that, that could be the case. We'd like to set aspirational goals to get things done. If, if we could do it on a faster timeline, then great. But that would be something to consider for the actual just wording of.
I, I do think that that's, sounds like it would be reasonable, especially where it's written that we would partner with an equity audit agency by the spring of this school year. So if we're partnering in the spring, it may start in the spring, but I feel like it would probably get jumpstarted in the fall of the following school year.
I'm guessing there is a, a financial component to doing an equity audit.
Right.
It's going to have to be accounted for in, in the budget.
Right.
That then we have to, I mean, that won't happen till, till May, until all of those final approvals. So like, that's the, I think that's the realistic timeline we're thinking about unless there is more leeway in the budget that with discretionary spending, I don't know, but.
That's a good point. Yep.
None that I know.
Yeah. We're not talking a couple thousand.
Well, I think that's why I worded it in such a way that this would be something that we would also put in the budget, you know, presentation on January, whatever day it is. But, you know, we'll aggressively pursue it. Be a good thing.
Just to piggyback onto that real quick, I mean, that may be a motivation for us in the spring to establish the goals for the following year. It also gives Dr. Gilligan and the team the summer to gather some of the information to start to lay the plan out. Because now, you know, it's end of, basically the end of September, it's going to be the 13th of October before we even start that. And to now change some course or things of that nature, you know, we're, we're three months into the school year.
That's actually an excellent idea, or even in the summer retreat at the latest.
Yeah. It's, I think a little bit of the timing too, was when you do evaluations, you guys know, particularly two of you guys on the committee, and the rest of you from doing it. You know, DESE has their timeframe as well.
Yep.
You know, so, you know, the goals for the year. And so, oh, you, very good points. I think, you know, I certainly, the school committee budget directives, I think that some of the other things that we've done are helpful. And I think it's a good point, Andrew. I think we could get started earlier, at least in, put it in the right direction coming forward.
At least start the conversation.
Absolutely.
But thank you. Anything else? Okay. Public comment? There are none. There is no public here. Member comments? Ms. Picard?
No comments. Thank you so much.
Mr. Hicks?
I had the opportunity to go watch the soccer game last Tuesday with my son, who very much liked it. Great to see the athletes out there playing, even in the rain. So that was a lot of fun. So it was great to watch them score that goal and then win the game. But I'm so excited to have all the athletics happening again and kids be able to participate like fully and like nothing of worry. So that was great. And yeah, I lost my train of thought, so that's all I got. I'm excited, I'm, I'm, my own personal goal is to try and get to more and more of the school athletic competitions, to watch kids.
It's always a feel-good time when you're there. Yep. Mr. McDevitt?
No, nothing to add other than I think you are two for two for ending meetings early. And well done.
Thanks.
Nice. Thank you for the segue, Mr. Hicks, because my comment is also about athletics. I just want to put another plug for nights on the run. It is October 8th, which is the long weekend this year. I'm told there's no soccer tournament this week, that, that weekend this year, so that's why they picked the date. Encouraging all the elementary school and middle school kids to come out. And if you run, you represent your school well, you bring home the trophy for the school that has the most percentage of participants. And this year, we're also expanding that to high school. So all the high school athletes, the greatest percentage of the team that comes out will get $100 towards their end of the year party, their banquet, I think. So. And if you don't run, come out and walk, it's just a nice day, and all proceeds go to the North Andover Athletic Association for the athletics.
Great. Thank you. I don't have any comments either, except I will note that time is.
Before she brags anymore.
You're going to start talking? And so we'll vote. Ms. Picard?
Did, I'm sorry, did somebody move to adjourn?
And second.
Moved in second.
Okay. I'm sorry. It's not, it's, I'm not getting much volume from you guys tonight, and sometimes the, the words lag. So yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Feats?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are 5-0, and I think that means we're adjourned.
8-0-7.
Have a good night.